Good evening, everyone. It is time to start the Thursday, April 23rd, 2020, Virtual Regular Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Present.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Kirkwood.
He can't hear you.
Wave your hand.
He can't hear you.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
President. President. Item two, Leaders Invocation will be led by Alderman Sylvia Bolton, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Bolton?
May let us pray. God of might and God of strength. According to the Gospels that were written in 3rd John, the first chapter, you said, "God, you wish above all that we might prosper and be in health, even that our soul might prosper." According to Psalms 90 and 17, it says, "May the favor of the Lord, our God, rest upon us and establish the works of our hands, that our plans be accomplished and succeed. As we seek your face, God, for counsel, may our decisions be guided with discretion. May we have a spirit of proficiency, knowing how to manage our governmental affairs today for the city of Waukegan, that it may bring peace and prosperity. May your power, O God, bring physical and emotional healing to those that are suffering right now due to the virus and maybe any many other ailments. Father God, we ask this; we declare that you are our strength and our portion. In Jesus' name, let all say amen."
Amen. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Good evening, everyone, once again. We also want to continue, bring our condolences, offering our condolences from the mayor and citizens of Waukegan of the passing of former all 12 years. As many of you know or have already seen, beginning tomorrow at 12 noon, we are requiring everyone in the public to wear something covering your nose or mouth. Additionally, the Governor, Governor Pritzker announced today that this will become a statewide rule or mandate effective May 1. While I know this is difficult, but it is necessary decision. At the consulting with the Lake County Health Department, Illinois Department of Public Health, and considering the health of our residents and essential workers and business community, we thought this was necessary to help us. You've always been great about sharing this information. Nation, but as you know, we have well over 100,000 residents that live in our community. So I'm asking you to continue to share this as much as humanly possible so we can move to where everyone has something covering their face and nose. You ask why? If we're looking to come back to, to be normal, not just in our city, but throughout our state and through our country, one of the ways that we can do this is by helping ourselves with this particular measure. I thank you. I can say with, with all the Aldermen who are present, we appreciate you and understand that if we continue with these type of measures, we will see ourselves at a day where we will be back to the way we were prior to this breakout. I'd like to give some shout outs, but before we do that, there is a lot of information that is floating about through our community. Some of the information, while well intended, unfortunately is not in, has all of the correct information. One of those things is regarding what we call services. There is a new system out there that was brought to us by the United Way, it's called 211. You can call that number 211, and they will be able to give you any help when it comes to what resources are out there for the particular need that you have. We strongly suggest that you use that service to ask, to ask any question as we could pertaining to any type of services you think you might need or you just have some questions for. Again, United Way, and the number is 211. There's been some people doing some remarkable things in our community, and I want to just highlight them at this time. For the Aldermen, if you get a chance to see either the executive directors, any of the, the staff that works for these particular organization, please let them know that we appreciate what they're doing, not just in Waukegan, throughout Lake County, ultimately for the state of Illinois. One of them is our own Waukegan Township. Waukegan Township today, from 11 to 1, 1:00 PM, distributed face cover, some face covers for, for our seniors and for those who came to Park Place to pick them up. So thank you to Waukegan Township Supervisor, Mrs. Jones, to your board, and to all of your staff who are out there. And I did take some pictures, and I'm going to show a big thank you on my webpage, my Facebook page. South Park Grocery Store. South Park Grocery Store donated well over 2,000 N95 masks to Vista Health Center. So we want to thank them for that. Classic Kia, Fred Marks and his team donated face coverings to our Waukegan Police and Waukegan Fire Departments. Clayton from Visual Pack has donated some, some, just a container of disinfectant that we are using in public works trucks throughout City Hall, and we'll be, and we'll be dropping some of them off to some of our nursing homes and senior citizens buildings. One of our biggest contributors, I think in, in the country, is in our backyard, and it's Abvi Pharmaceutical Company. They have donated throughout the entire Lake County PPE equipment to all, and I repeat, to all police departments and all fire departments in the county of Lake. And as you all know, they want, they're one of the leaders in making sure that we're, all of the test kits are tested properly and get a, a quick response. And this was organized by Mandy Florp, the Executive Director of our Lake County Municipal League, and assisted by our own Risk Manager, Ms. Katie Dipp. With that being said, item two, there have been no resolutions, proclamations, presentations, or appointments. Item three, audience time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We will have those letters, emails that were sent to us be read by David Motley, the relations, and they will be timed. Thank you.
David, where are you? Hold on, David. Okay, David.
First is from Margaret Carrasco. Please read for audience time at tonight's meeting. Waukegan Mayor Sam Cunningham. Chicago Mayor Light Toot is providing $2,000 assistance grants to residents to help pay their rent or mortgage. What are you doing? Well, why aren't you doing this also for all Waukegan residents? And what and how are you helping residents? Your photobombs campaigning picks don't help residents. You should not be out shaking hands, spreading germs. We want a response tonight. Next one is from Jesser Rivera. So I heard there will be a town meeting, and I have a question. So I was a bartender before COVID-19, and I've been without work for almost two months now. I'm having a hard time with my rent and other bills. What is the city going to do for its residents who are struggling to pay rent like me? I'm having a hard time getting my stimulus check. I'm stressing out, and I feel alone in this. So I ask again, what is Waukegan going to do about it? The third one is from Fabiola Kaliks. I need help to pay the rent. The fourth is from Carlos Antunes. Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Herrera. I live in Waukegan, IL. I want to ask if you can help me with the rent. I have almost two months without work due to COVID-19. I am a single father, and I'm very worried because I already owe almost two months of rent. If you can help me, please send me an email or call me on my number, and I'm not going to read that. I hope you can help me with something. Thank you very much, and happy afternoon. The fifth is from Nina Sokka Castillo. Good afternoon, Mayor. I hereby want to make a requested for any type of help since I have been without work for a month and a half and have not received any type of help. I will appreciate it very much if you can help us, the people of Waukegan. Nina Sokka Castillo. Number six is from Claudia Gutierrez. Hola, buenas tardes. Disculpe, no tienen ayuda o algún programa que ayude con el pago de la renta. Todo estoy teniendo problemas para pagarla ya que debido a la pandemia no estoy trabajando. Gracias. Number seven, from Dylan Burdette. I have a couple of questions regarding the mask order set to go into effect tomorrow, Friday. As I was spreading the word on this order, I kept seeing the same question. Is the city going to provide masks or provide a place to purchase them? I have forwarded this question on to my Alderman Keith Turner and to Alderwoman Lynn Florian. I am hoping that there is an answer that the city can provide to its residents. Secondly, is there a contact where residents can report violations of this emergency order? There are many people who report seeing lack of masks and social distancing measures in our city, both from businesses and personal events. How should residents report such activity? Dr. Dylan Burdette, PhD. And the eighth one is from Michelle Moreles. Hello, my name is Michelle Moreles. I'm a native of Waukegan. In light of this coronavirus spreading, many residents of Waukegan are facing a great deal of economic hardship. Mayor Lightfoot announced $2,000 grants for residents of Chicago to help pay their mortgage and rent. What is the major of Waukegan looking into to help the residents of this great city? I am asking you and the mayor's office to look into initiatives that would assist the residents of Waukegan monetarily. If our pockets are strong, our city's economy is strong. As you know, people need a roof over their heads, and many, including myself, are wondering how we are going to continue to do this over these next few months. I'm asking the mayor of, and his office to advocate for its citizens urgently and effectively. I will be following up to inquire over the mayor's intentions regarding this matter. Looking forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Michelle Moreles. And that concludes audience time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Francis.
Item four, Consent Agenda. It's a motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Turner to approve the Consent Agenda. Items 4A through 4II. Are there any questions to the motion? Let's see, Alderman Florians, Nate, hands up. Alderman Florian, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Florian.
Um, yes, Mayor, I would like item U and W and X pulled out if possible.
U, W, and X. U, W, and X. All right, Alderman, Alderman Taylor and Alderman Rivera? Did you have your hand up, Alderman Rivera?
Yeah, that was my same request.
Okay, Alderman Taylor, same thing?
Mine was U and W.
Okay, all right. There's a motion on the floor. Items 4A through T. Items 4D for Y through II. I will read the, I will read the motions, and then we'll take care of the others, okay? Okay, any questions still? I'll be reading the motions. Item 4A, Motion to Approve Regular Meeting Minutes from Monday, March 16th, 2020. Item B, Motion to Approve the Virtual Special Counsel Meeting Committee of the Whole Budget Hearing Meeting from Thursday, April 9th. Proclamation Earth Week, April 20 through 25th. Earth Day, April 22nd, 2020. Proclamation Native Plant Week, April 20th through 24th, 2020. Waukegan School District, Light for the Fight. Motion, item G, Motion to Approve Regular Payroll Date, April 10th, 22, 2020. A total amount of $1,552,859.3. Item H, Motion to Approve Elective Official Civil Service Stipend, dated April 10th, 2020. Total amount of $6,866.66. Item I, Motion to Approve Fire Uniform Allowance Stipend, dated April 10th, 2020. Total amount of $55,000.
There was somebody going to be coming over to troubleshoot this computer. We can hear you now.
Can we mute him? Item, item J, To Approve MAP 2018 Retro, dated April 10th, 2020. In a total amount of $80,821.81. Item K, Motion to Approve PBLC Holiday Buyback, dated April 10th, 2020. Total amount of $32,465.80. Item L, Motion to Approve Retro Ross, Retro Number 2475, dated April 10th, 2020. In a total amount of $95.30. Item M, Motion to Retroactively Approve the Building Commission's Spending Authority in way of all bidding requirements for the amount not to exceed $40,000 with Rivera Heating Cooling, for purpose of HVAC inspection. Granted for services rendered May 1 through 2019 through May 30th, 2020. April, I'm sorry. Item N, Motion to Retroactively Approve the Public Works Directive Spending Authority in way of all bidding requirements with Mid-American Core and Main Waukegan Safe and Lock for the amount not to exceed $45,000, $46,000, $30,000 respectively. The authority is granted only for the service rendered from May 1, 2019 to April 30th, 2020. Item O, Motion to Retroactively Approve the Public Works Directive Spending Authority with Waukegan Tire in amount not to exceed $30,000 for the purpose of vehicle and equipment parts, supplies utilized in the state of Illinois General Service Master, Master Purchase Order 8-416 CM-Boss 4-P-5995, and therefore exempt from the city's competitive bidding process pursuant to the Section 2-45 (I) 3, Joint Purchasing. This authority is granted for the only service rendered from May 1, 2019 to May 30, 2020. Motion to Retroactively Approve the Public Works Directive Spending Authority with Monroe Trucking in amount not to exceed $25,000 for the purpose of vehicle and equipment parts, supplies utilizing Sourcewell/NJIPA Contract Number 080114-MET, and therefore exempt from the city's competitive bidding process pursuant to the Section 2-45 (I) 3, Joint Purchasing. The authority is granted for the services rendered May 1, 2019 through May 30, 2020. Item Q, Motion to Retroactively Grant the Public Works Directive Spending Authority with alter for, for vehicle and equipment parts and supplies not to exceed $28,000 for the fiscal year May 1, 2019 through April 30, 2020 utilizing Sourcewell/NIPA Contract Number 3032119-CAT, and therefore exempt from the city's competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2-45 (I) 3, Joint Purchasing. Item R, Motion to Retroactively Approve the Building Commission to Enter into a Change Order for a contract that has performed emergency demolitions for the city. City Council approved an emergency general contract to webs excavate with $30,000. Vendor has been paid $42,600 fiscal year to date because separate demolition performed. Item S, Motion to Approve Change Order in Amount of $132,426 resulted from carry, carry audits of the city's workers' compensation property casualty insurance program. Bring the total amount, total premium and brokerage fees to $1,248,661 for the policy beginning July 1, 2019. Item T, Motion to Approve Resolution Authorizing Certain Agreements with Waukegan Municipal Beach Concessionaries for 2020 Lake Forest Season. Item B, Motion Authorize the City Treasurer to Renew a Letter of Credit in Amount of $1,405,000 with First and West Bank in order to meet the city's financial assurance EPA requirements relative to Yeoman Creek. Item Y, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Enter into a Contract with Campanella &amp; Sons, lowest qualified bidder for the Tana Hill Court Directional Board Stormwater Sewer Project in amount not to exceed $48,285. This project uses Series 2018 C Water and Sewer Bond Funds. Item Z, Motion to Authorize Mayor to Enter into a Contract with Campanella &amp; Sons, lowest qualified bidder for demolition of four houses in amount not to exceed $145,470. These project costs are reimbursable from an item grant. Motion authorized Mayor to enter to a, sorry, items 4AA. Motion to authorize Mayor to enter into a Contract with Dignified Cleaning Services LLC, the lowest quote, the lowest quote received for deep cleaning of facilities in response to COVID-19 concerns in amount not to exceed $89,000. Items BB, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Release the May 1, 2020 to April 30th, 2021 Annual Grant of $25,000 to Waukegan Main Street for continued support of economic development and community support programs. Item CC, Motion to Authorize Police Department to Apply for and if awarded, the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with I, Illinois ETSB for the purpose of purchasing and installing body worn and car cameras and related equipment. This grant provides $221,715 in funding for the cameras and additional local funds needed will come from the Asset Forfeiture Funds. Items DD, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Enter into a Contract with Aon, Exxon for body worn cameras and in car cameras, into view roam cameras, tasers not to exceed $390,870 per year for a five-year period sole source provider, and therefore exempt from the city, exempt from the city's competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2-458 (I) 1, Sole Source. Items EE, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Execute any and unnecessary documents in order to be reimbursed up to $95,895 in other funds from the Department of Justice to the Fiscal 20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund, CESF Grant. Items FF, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Execute any and unnecessary documents in order to accept $40,239 in rapid distribution Medicare fee for service, FFS, advanced reimbursements from HHS CARES Act Provided Relief Fund. Items GG, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Execute any and unnecessary documents in order to be reimbursed up to 75% of certain uninsured emergency protective measure cost funds from Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Public Assistance PA Program, COVID-19 Pandemic. Items HH, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Execute any and unnecessary documents in order to be reimbursed up to 25% of certain uninsured emergency protective measures cost fund, cost funds for Illinois Emergency Management Agency, EMA, Public Assistance PA Program, COVID-19 Pandemic. And items II, Motion to Approve an Increase in 2019/2020 Fiscal Year Spending Authority to Lake County Convention Center Bureau from, from $31,188 approved in June 2019 to membership dues to $36,263 to include paid advertising in annual publication and attending annual meetings. That was a mouthful, everybody. All right, with, with that being said, no other further questions? Roll call, please.
All right. Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian. Hi.
08.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
73.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Moseo.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Kirkwood.
He's still having trouble, I think.
He's on.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Alderman Kirkwood, can you hear me?
42.
42.
0873.
Alderman Newsom. Hi. I go back to Kirkwood.
Tell Kirk, tell Kirkwood to raise his hand. Just tell him to raise his hands.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Kirkwood.
You cannot listen or talk here.
Okay.
He can't hear us.
Thank you. All right.
Bob, what we're going to do is Alderman Kirkwood can raise his hands to confirm that he's voting yes.
He can't hear us, Sam.
Okay. All right.
I, I can hear. Somebody should call him on the phone.
He said you. Okay, he raised his hands. I texted, I texted him, everybody, just so you know. I texted him to raise his hands. All right, all right then. There's a motion on the floor with Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Rivera. Do you want to take these all together? Or as one separate? Sounds like you have to say.
I'd rather do them separately, but.
All right. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Rivera. Motion to Approve Resolution Authorizing Extension of Sales Tax Rebate Agreement, HD Supply Facilities Maintenance LT. Alderman Florian.
Um, as I've spoken before about these tax rebates, I'm just not in favor of doing this. We just paid this amount the last meeting, and I just wanted to be able to, like, go.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman Taylor?
Um, my concern with this is, well, I, I understand the purpose of tax rebates, and I have no issue per se with that. But my concern here is, we have to be very careful when we give these out, especially in light of not receiving the income that we're going to be or the revenues that we should this year. So in this particular case, they've had a rebate for five years. So in this particular case, they've had a rebate for five years. And I haven't seen them commit to a building or anything like that. I feel like there's other businesses who have committed to our community that are right now suffering. And so I'm a little leery to give a tax rebate. To a business that has had one for five years, when I have other businesses that are suffering and committed to the community. For a lot longer period and are not giving anything.
Do you Alderman Taylor, would you like for us to, do you have a business that you wanna uh suggest to us for that? If so, just send that into us, we can go from there.
Sure.
Okay, Alderman, we got Alderman Rivera and Alderman Turner, Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, um. Can you hear me?
It's a, it's a little foggy, but we.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay, my my concern, yeah, I share the same concerns. Um, that uh Alderman Taylor did with the. Lack of commitment uh from the company to purchase the property. Versus continuing to lease. Um, and and I again, I just wanted to highlight that, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. Firstly, I'd like to point out that this is not a tax rebate. They are not paying the taxes, the customer pay the taxes. If I go and buy something, I pay a tax and that is followed up through the city. So it's not a takes tax rebate, it's us giving away the money, the tax money that we would receive from their customer. And I object to that. Secondly. If these folks get a tax. Holiday or a tax payment, then why doesn't everyone else? As we all know, we're in this current co-virus co-COVID nineteen situation, we have numerous people who are out of. Nobody's talking about giving them a a tax refund or anything of that nature. You just read seven letters from several members of the community who are asking for assistance. Um, with their rent, we know we can't help them and we're not going to. So why would we give away money to this business? Thank you.
All right.
Sam Alderman, mayor, mayor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, that's we got Alderman, Alderman Mozio and then Alderman Kirkwood, Alderman Mozio.
Yeah, I know this is a bitter pill to swallow. This is four hundred thousand dollars. Remember, we just unanimously voted for union contracts nine nothing. Prove wages to all of our our unions that pass nine to nothing. There's gonna be more of these sales tax rebates coming down the pike, in my opinion, pre-COVID nineteen. And municipalities are gonna be in competition, fierce competition for the exact thing uh that this H D supply does. It's a call center, it's those orders, it's actually still operational now. If you don't, they'll pick up and they'll go to Zion tomorrow because it's an easy move and they'll get a better deal from Zion or a better deal from Gurnee. And that community will get four hundred thousand dollars. I get it, but. We must remember too, a lot of Vernon Hills shopping area with sales tax rebates. Most car dealerships, whether in Waukegan, Gurnee or Libertyville, were sales tax rebates. It all becomes competitive. We can say we're not gonna give anybody rebates. We don't know pre-COVID, we may, it may be pre-COVID, we may have seventy percent or fifty percent or thirty percent of our businesses not reopen again. So there goes another revenue stream that we don't have. How do we pay our employees?
I agree.
How do we pay them? I don't like giving sell this rebate to people, but even more so now. Pre-COVID, you're gonna have to be creative, you're gonna have to make deals, you got to take what comes down the pike. We got to be it all together. I get calls every day from small business owners in Waukegan that are worried. What am I gonna do? What am I gonna do? I don't have an answer for him right now. Darian just gave back their food and beverage to their uh small business owners. Once they open back up. There's gonna be all kinds of things like that come down the pipe. We need to be creative and open-minded to revenue streams. And how we're gonna balance the books and more importantly, how are we gonna pay our people? You can only say thank you so much. Thank you doesn't pay our employees' bills either. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you go.
Speaker down on your computer.
Let's go ahead and talk, yeah.
Okay, well, I agree with uh Alderman Mozio in terms of. Realize with the situation we're in right now and, you know, to start taking money away from individuals that. And that's my comment.
Uh 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 obviously, oh Alderman Alderman Newsom?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment as well. I was not in favor of H D getting um. An extension, but at the time we extended it for till June. As a feedback. Uh, I understand with Alderman Mozio as well that we would be cutting off all resources if we did not approve this. And right now, I think Alderman Mozio meant post-COVID. You know, we don't know what we're gonna be uh looking at. But uh I've spoken with Corporation Council. We've decided to extend this to the end of the fiscal year. And at the end of this year, October, November, we will go into negotiations with them again. And at that time, if we cannot come up with a solution that that is beneficial to our community. Then uh I would be uh not opposed to reducing the amount of rebate that they get. But I'm not in agreement with fifty fifty. So at that time, if we can't come up with a solution, then. Uh, it would be up to this council to decide what we want to do going forward. But right now, I don't want to cut off all income. Coming into the city by not approving just this extension until the end of the fiscal year. Those are my comments.
Okay, Alderman Bolton?
Yes, I validate the the fact that was made that we don't want to lose any business. Uh, money is going to other cities, we need to remain and maintain the businesses that we have here.
Thank you. You know, everybody, I I know I heard uh several Aldermen say that. Uh, no one is giving business or giving money to the public. If you, all of you can remember, uh during the stimulus packages, there was, I think, roughly four of them. This last stimulus package was a huge debate uh on both sides of the aisle. Do we give money to uh businesses in order to keep going? Ultimately, that won. That was a hard pill to swallow for a lot of national legislators. Ultimately, they decided to go ahead. And for us here in Waukegan, while this is not the the uh. The best, the 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 favorite way for us to to uh uh of this practice. It is to Greg Alderman Mozio's point, this is gonna be the way of doing business in order to retain various companies in our community. But all of you've said your piece, I respect what you're saying, uh and and then we move on from there. I'm gonna have Alderman Turner then roll call please, Alderman Turner.
So you guys are making an assumption that if we don't pay this business to stay here, they're gonna leave. Doesn't that also hold true for every other business, every bar, every car lot, every, any business in Waukegan? If we don't give them tax money back, they're gonna up and move to Zion or North Chicago, that doesn't, that, no.
Real real quick, mayor, I gotta respond to that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Alderman Mozio.
How do you know where they're gonna move?
Keith, Keith, in all due respect, they've already done it before, history lesson, all those car dealerships. Where they, where they, you think what most of them started? Waukegan, they're gone now.
Business, Greg, that's a free market, you have a right to move, but we.
Right, well, we we can enforce them all the move. How, again, I get back to my point. Everybody up here voted for union contracts, everybody, nine zip. How you gonna pay your people?
I I I I just want to say one more thing, mayor.
Alderman Newsom.
Um, we are going to, after this is over, we're going to come up with guidelines. Where a business will know beforehand what the guidelines are for receiving rebates. And then at that time, they can decide if we want to move, we'll have something in writing. Where they won't even come if they know that that's hey, I gotta have this or, you know, hey, they won't be getting any fifty fifty rebates.
I'd like to see every business in the sixth ward get a tax rebate.
All you have to do, Alderman, all you have to, all you have to do, Alderman, is put it up there and vote on it. Roll call please.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera. There was no, sir. Alderman Florian. No. Alderman Taylor.
No, but I'd like to say this, I don't think that we can continue like, we gave guideline with. We had guidelines under that we looked at with. They didn't look at, they didn't match any of them, we still gave them a tax rebate.
I disagree with that, Alderman, but that's your opinion.
Yeah, I I just feel like.
Roll call please.
Not afford to give it to everybody, so I'm a no.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Bob, do I need to vote on this? Okay, uh, motion by Alderman Vera, second by Alderman Taylor, authorize mayor to reappoint to renew the agreement with Daniel Long and Pen sale. At the city uh Corporation Council May one twenty-one fiscal year monthly retain of thirty-eight thousand six hundred seven dollars plus reimbursement. Uh reasonable out-of-pocket expense. Alderman Rivera.
Um, yeah, the um, can can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, sir.
Okay, good. The um, the concern that I had with this is uh. And and it's no disrespect to Mr. Long. And his associates, but uh they're asking for, they're asking for a two. A two percent increase. And um, and it seems like uh from the time that I've been an Alderman. Um, their their work has been reduced, uh their the FOIA. Uh request they are no longer doing uh because of the uh outstanding va- or the uh volume that comes in. Um, and uh and and also uh part of it, part of it was uh. Was indicating that uh because we had to do some expunchements. Um, that that was gonna take up a lot of their time. Um, I don't know how many expunchements they've done. It seems though that allowing a two percent increase when the work. Basically has been reduced, um, doesn't doesn't seem like a prudent thing to do at this time.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Taylor?
Um, when I look back on some of the figures, when we first um.
And that was a comment, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir.
When we first brought Mr. Long in um in two thousand seventeen, the contract was for four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
That was my comment, mayor.
Thank you, I got you. Thank you, Alderman.
And included everything, including FOIAs. In May of two thousand eighteen, we voted a two percent increase. Um, and then in June of last year, we voted another two percent increase plus six thousand dollars in expenditures. And we took the FOIAs out and are paying another attorney fifty-five thousand dollars for that. So the cost proved to the city is five hundred and fifteen thousand then. Now, there's another two percent increase and we're still farming FOIAs out, so. That brings the total service up to five hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. I, why, I have no problem with the services that we're receiving. One of my concerns is, one, this figure is getting a little higher and do we look now at bidding it out? Second of all, what would happen if Mr. Long retired? I'm sure Mr. Durango would step in, but his fees were initially lower than what Mr. Long's were. If suddenly Mr. Long retired, do the fees get adjusted to compensate for that or how is that gonna work?
But well, 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 once that, once we cross that road, man, we'll be a become there. Uh, but at this between time, this is what we re- was recommended and uh I I see no problem with us moving forward with that. Um, uh, you're you're certainly your your opinion is is gonna be weighed, but right now, that's where we're at right now. Alderman Florian.
Um, I agree with um the concerns about the two percent increase basically, especially during this. Time when we know our finances are going to be affected greatly by what's occurring currently, so that was that was. My concern.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, the second roll call please.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Uh, motion by Alderman uh Taylor, second by Alderman Florian. Uh, motion to authorize mayor to enter into a contract with office plus solutions and supplies for paper and office supplies not to exceed ninety-five thousand. For the fiscal year May one twenty twenty, April thirtieth through April thirtieth twenty twenty-one. And for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand for the fiscal year May one twenty twenty, one through April thirtieth twenty twenty-two. Utilizes Omni Opit contract number R one nine zero three one. And then therefore exempt from the city's competitive bidding process pursuant to section two dash four five eight. Uh, parentheses I parentheses three joint purchasing. Alderman Taylor.
I didn't, I don't have a question.
Uh Alderman Florian?
Um, yes, sir, um, I guess I just wanted clarity about why there was. Uh, a no bid contract for this. I know there are local business and like to do business with Waukegan businesses, I get that. From what I understand though, this company has been bought out by a bigger company that, you know, may end up moving them out of the city eventually. So I'm just curious, um, with something like office supplies, why we don't make sure we bid that out?
Ma'am, uh honestly, there this, if I'm not mistaken, this is a national contract that we that we into, is that, is that correct, Bob? I think this is one of those, this is a national contract, so. It, that's why it was a no bid, because it's a national contract, so we latched on to that federal contract, like what we would do like on a state or a county contract.
And there is a uh, they give us governmental pricing the same as they do to the state of. That's what this came in, so there is competitive process, it just isn't one that we had and conduct ourselves.
And and just Alderman Florian, this is not a no bid contract. It still gets bid it out, it just get bid it out under that federal process or I think it's a federal state.
It's a state process.
State process, all right.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call please.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's it's part of a joint purchasing contract. Roll call please.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozio.
Hi.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, mess, motion's passing, Carrie. Alderman Florian, just to let you know, it was a bid, it was just bid it up by a national organization, just want to let you know, ma'am. All right. That motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Rivera, authorized uh the mayor to enter into a contract with Campanella and Sons, the lowest qualified bidder. for the demolition of four houses in an amount not to exceed a hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. This project costs are reimbursable through the Ida Grant. So the money's coming from the Ida Grant, not the city of Waukegan. Who, Alderman Florian, I think you want to hold this up? Alderman Rivera? No? All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
The motion's passed and carried. Item five A, Public Works Presentation of Cartograph. All right, I think we have, uh, Alderman, just to let you know, Cartograph is a system that the Public Works Department, uh, we've been working on about the last three months. And simply what this, this system will do for us, it will capture our somewhat almost exact cost of what it costs per person, per project when it comes to public works. It'll also identify where most of our problems at within the city as they come in through Public Works Department. And, and it give, it is, uh, it, it also give you a timeline of what, what, how much time it takes for, uh, to do a specific call or project, whether it be from pothole filling to picking up brush, to water main breaks, et cetera. We thought this was, we thought we needed this, so all of you, since most of you really are in tune with our budget, to really see what it costs in order to provide the level of service that our residents expect. And, uh, and that we have to give out. So, uh, I'm gonna give, I think about five minutes on things, and I think we're gonna highlight the number of calls with, within the various parts of public works, uh, a cost associated with that. And, uh, how we are using technology as we try, try moving forward with operating our community. Um, with that being said, I think we have Isabel. Isabel, are you gonna lead with this?
Yes.
Okay, there's Isabel on the line, everybody. This is our GS, GIS analyst for the, uh, for, for Public Works, Waukegan, uh, corner rear. And she's now working at the Public Works Department. All right, Isabel, go ahead, huh?
Um, am I able to get the presentation?
Uh, not yet. It's not visible. All right, you have to share the screen. Isabel, Isabel, just go ahead and share your screen. There we go. Thank you, Isabel.
All right, so the mayor already talked a little bit about it, but Cartograph's an application, uh, we started to introduce and build with everyone about a year and a half ago. Uh, before Cartograph, all calls and requests from the residents, Aldermen, and the rest of the administrator, administration were written in a piece of paper that went from the administrator to the foreman, to the laborers, back to the foreman, and back to the admin again to, uh, when it was completed. So this piece of paper was touched by, uh, many people, some even got ripped dirty wet by the time it got back to the office to file. So Public Works saw Cartograph as an alternative to this piece of paper, and in return, received more information than we realized needed. Uh, here's just a quick agenda of what I'm gonna go over. Uh, what is Cartograph? What is GIS? Incorporating both, uh, how we use, use it at Public Works, and I will go over the type of data that we get back and our end goal and future plan. Uh, so Cartograph is, um, it's, it's a multiple program, um. The first being an asset management program that will help us track signs, pavements, uh, valves, mains, everything that's in the city uh, into this program. It's also a system that tracks work, repairs, maintenance, uh, replacements, everything the guys do here in the city, it'll keep track of that. Uh, it keeps track of the labor equipment, uh, materials used, and the daily tasks. Uh, it also helps us keep track of all requesters' information, uh, as well as the requests coming in via, uh, phone, emails, and online requests. Uh, I will go over each one and how it looks like later in the data portion of the presentation, but for now, in order to understand how it works, we need to know what GIS is. And here's a long, uh, definition that as re-provided in their website, but just to summarize it, it simply means that it's a system or application where we can create maps to store, display, and analyze the data, which is what we do with, uh, Cartograph. So with the combination, we are able to plot and identify problems, manage the resource, uh, response time from when we receive a request to when we act upon it. Uh, manage the events or work we have scheduled, uh, understand the trends after inputting everything accordingly, perform forecasting, meaning we're able to predict, uh, or to help make informed decisions in the city. Uh, for example, replacing mains, uh, light fixtures, uh, repaved streets, and, and lastly, set priorities. Uh, in the beginning, I spoke about the process of a request with a piece of paper, Cartograph, uh, it's similar, um, so the cycle happens uh, the same, but there is no paper, and everything just happens quicker within seconds. So everything starts off with the resident encountering a problem in the city and calling Public Works. Uh, the admin gathers all the information, gives it to the foreman to re- uh, and reads it, and assigns a task and labor within a few clicks. Uh, the labor automatically receives it within seconds in his tablet, performs the task, enters labor hours, equipment, material, and everything else used to fix the problem, and closes it. Uh, once it closed, uh, the foreman receives the notification, it was closed, verifies, um, that it was done correctly, closes the initial request entered, um, although it's not set up yet, uh, because we're still in the trial stages. Uh, but by closing it, the re- the request will trigger, um, an email to the resident saying it is complete. Uh, if they wanna call, then there will be a note saying for the foreman or admin to call back, um, but everything, the cycle repeats, um, for every request. Uh, so now that you have more of an idea of the process, uh, this is the data we are able to gather with the help of GIS and Cartograph together. Uh, under request, we're able to keep the caller's information and the issues they have encountered over time. Uh, if they call back to check up on the update, uh, we're able to track the number of calls for each issue and see how, um, and see how many, or how many times for each issue and what type of issues they've, um, called for. Uh, we can also see the location of the issues, so over time, we'll be able to see patterns at a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. Uh, this is another type of graph that we'll be able to see over time. Uh, we are currently in the trial stages of implementing the system, so it's still too early to analyze the trends. However, however, we expect to see more patterns, uh, when we have more, more months entered. Uh, with Cartograph, we can also narrow down the data even more. Uh, here we have about a hundred forty sewer backups that we have been, that have been reported within the last few months. As we can see, the majority of backups have been homeowner backups. If we want to narrow down even more and only see the city's backups, we can do so. Uh, so if the city were to do a thorough program and replace some sewer mains, for example, over time, this could give us an idea of where to start. Under the work section, we can keep track of the task and work orders. With the task, we can keep track of cost and labor, materials, and equipment for a particular job performed. Similar to the request, we can keep track of the location and be able to analyze it later and look for patterns along the way. When we keep track of how long it's taking from the time we receive it to the time being closed, then we can ask questions like, is it taking so long to pick up some branches because we need better equipment? Or is it because we're short-staffed? Or is it because we just need to be better organized? Here are the kind of reports we can put together. Uh, we are still at the trial stage of implementing costs, so nothing here is a hundred percent accurate. But this chart divides each activity and gives us the average cost for performing that specific activity. Under work, we can also quantify larger events such as snow. On this specific day, we went out three times and calculated for each of the times. We entered the hours of the crew and the equipment that was used to receive a rough estimate of how much the event cost us. So our end goal is to use this program and be able to quantify larger events such as the snow event and also water main break. Under assets, we are able to track each asset individually. We can see what kind of work was done on each specific asset, uh, track its condition, cost, and dimension. On the specific, um, strip here that it's in purple, uh, on McCurry from Sunset to Sequoia, we can see that we already have two tasks done, which were pothole repairs. And as we saw with work and requests, uh, if we were to decide what streets to redo, uh, we can narrow it down which segments have been, have received the most patching and come up with a list for the road program. Uh, same goes with water mains, valves, signs, and everything in the city. Uh, this is another type of report we can see. Uh, it will list the activity done for each asset and the money spent, uh, to date on that specific asset. And this one in particular is, uh, a light fixture, at least. So when Cartograph went live, uh, we created an online forum for the, so the public could be more involved with Cartograph. However, currently, when someone submits it, we receive an email and manually have to enter everything. But, uh, uh, we are currently working with IT, NPR to see if everything can automatically just go into Cartograph, so we save a step in, in the process. Uh, we also want the data entered into Cartograph, uh, such as assets, attributes, tasks, equipment, materials to be a hundred percent there. Uh, we will want to train everyone in Cartograph, uh, which we expect to, we need more tablets so that we do not lose any data in the long run. Currently, those who do not have a tablet or don't, haven't been taught Cartograph, wait until someone else enters i- into the system. So sometimes when it's not entered, then we lose that data and over, our overall, uh, goal is to have a hundred percent accurate data, um, to start analyzing data and share it, uh, to the public. And that's about all I have.
Well, thank you. Uh, thank you, Isabel. I really appreciate this. Alderman, as we move forward with this type of process, we're gonna need your help. All right, I'll get to you in just one second, Alderman Rivera. We're gonna need your help. Any calls, I mean, any calls that you get, we need for us to start tracking this, so we can then start helping us with our, uh, our, our goals of what we, what is needed for us to run and operate our city. Alderman Rivera?
Um, yeah, um, I just had a quick question, um, and I believe Mr. Isabel, if we have statistics as to, um, the, the timing of some of these activities, how long these activities should take, and are we looking at that?
Uh, that is one of the goals we have. Um, right now, we don't have that, um, data because uh, it's, I shouldn't say they're not trained, but, um, they're not there yet where, uh, as soon as they finish it, they close it right away. Um, they do get sidetracked with other things, uh, so right now, not, not everyone goes in and closes it right away, so we don't have that data. So we wanna get them there where, uh, they automatically know to check and close it, and that way the, the timeframe is, uh, accurate and shorter than, uh, right now what the data is showing now. So we don't have that numbers yet.
Are there any national, uh, uh, databases that we can go and, and try to obtain information like that, or no?
Um, I don't know if it's national, but I know some cities have, um, have been with Cartograph longer than we have. Um, and they took, uh, years to get to that point, so they have some data there, uh, but I don't know if that's, uh, public.
Well, Alderman, uh, Rivera, the answer to the question is yes, and that is the, oh, uh, the, uh, Association of Public Works, the national organization, they have those things of what it takes for a manhole, a, a fill, backfill a pothole. They have all of those things as part of their organization. What we're doing with Public Works today, uh, we're, we're beginning to make sure that our foremans, some of our team leads, get certified through that organization. It's the same organization that gave us the National Award for the Washington Street Project.
Mm-hmm.
What we're gonna start doing is having our foremans, our, uh, directors, assistant directors become certified in all of those, whether you be of water main, sewer work, asphalt, and all of that right now is part of, is part of that organization. So the answer to the question, yes, they have it. We're beginning to get online with that, so we start to mirror those best practices of what the national organizations in some of our surrounding cities. Uh, right now, Cartograph is with Waukegan, is with Buffalo Grove, and I think a couple of other cities. The unfortunate part for us, those cities are so small that they don't see some of the things that we see in Waukegan to really compare to. That's why we have to go outside and be a part of this national organization.
Quantity. Yeah, and the quantity that we see compared.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, so.
Sounds like a great program. Uh, I appreciate the presentation. It was very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. But the, the key to all this, though, uh, one of the things I said, did you have your hand up, Alderman Bolton? Alderman Bolton?
Take the presentation, 'cause if we can work more efficiently, then of course, we can save more money for the city. So I want to, Isabel.
You, you, you took.
We need to work more effectively, because sometimes orders and requests are put in and, and dismissed, or it takes too long. Thank you.
Well, I, I think this is the, the very reason when, uh, we saw this between Mike, Pat Needham, the IT, uh, and, and, and myself along with, with others, and with Tina, the reason we went to the, to exactly the point you said, more efficient working, and how to really capture what it costs for us to do the things that we do, provide the services that we do for the city of Waukegan. While everyone sees a dollar amount given to a specific department, they don't see the actual cost of what it takes to run that department. So when we're talking about tax levy, when we're talking about taxes and who gets them, who doesn't get them, you have a, you, you have something to compare that to. Uh, we're not only gonna be doing this for this department, but right now, we're in the midst of, of, uh, of, of building department doing the same thing with a different program. So you will be able to have, I, my goal is to have Alderman to have a, have a program at the end of the year. Here's what the cost came in for each department to, to, to run. And then have that broken down by, you know, uh, those different departments within Public Works, within police, within building department, even at City Hall. And, and that's, that's the, the way of being efficient to your, to your point, Alderman Bolton. And, and if we're not efficient, then we cannot, uh, we cannot accurately talk to our citizens about what it takes to operate this community. And that's, that's the, the goal. Alderman Taylor?
I think it's a great program, and I agree with Alderman Bolton. Um, my concern is, is will we, um, I guess, because everybody in the department is going to be at a different technology level. And do we have a solid core program that will get them up to the training that we need? I know Isabel is great, and I don't know if she's the one who's gonna be doing the training. But, you know, that's the big thing, is really making sure our employees get this and get the technology behind them that they're on board with this, because, you know, a lot of times when we start off with new technology, people are a little nervous, and then they, they don't do it. And I wanna make sure we really implement this program, 'cause it's a great program.
Well, Alderman Newsome, I'll get with you when we answer that question, before we even brought it to you guys. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Um, the reason we went with this is because it's fairly simple. It is, it, it is something, though, that the employees had a little bit of, uh, didn't wanna work with it quite as well, but we're getting to the point now where they actually like it. And we're, we're starting to get to the point where they're starting to compete with each other about who has more calls and what they do. And it also gives us the ability, as we go along and this, this program becomes more efficient, so to speak, or, or more well-done, we'll be able to actually move employees from a department to department, because we've been doing cross-training. So that when we have a problem with how many trees, then we can move more people in each department and kind of work, uh, So that when we have a problem with how many trees, then we can move more people in each department and kind of work, make it more efficient.
Alderman, Alderman Newsom?
That I think it's an awesome program and Isabel did a good job with the presentation. I'm just looking forward to the end process where when a resident calls, they can get that information back that it was taken care of instead of not knowing whether it was taken care of or not. So that's the big thing is that, okay, after it's taken care of, call me back and let me know that they took it serious and took care of my, my request. So I'm just looking forward to that. I know sometimes when, or most of the time when I'm talking to Mr. Hewitt about a call that I've made, they'll call me back and let me know. And then I'll call the resident back and let them know. Because sometimes if the resident sees that it's taken care of, they won't call you back and let us take, and let you know that it's taken care of. So I like to make sure that when I get the feedback, that I call the resident myself and let them know that it's been taken care of. If you have any more issues or questions, feel free to reach out to me again. Or I'll go through there myself and see that it's taken care of. And whether I've gotten a call back from the resident or not, I'll call them and say, well, I see that it's taken care of. So if you have any questions, please let me know. So I'm looking forward to that automatic response back to the resident. And I'm sure that they'll be happy to receive that response back by email or phone call, whichever way they want to get that response back. So I think it's an awesome program.
Thank you very much. Isabel, can you kind of address that a little bit? Because I know we haven't, it's, it's live, but it's live within Public Works. Isabel, can you go ahead with that, please? Or Mike?
Yeah, the system is meant to inform the resident once it's done. But because everyone's not there yet to where they have to remember to close it, then we don't have that on currently. Because they could close it a month later, although the work was done, they closed it a month later. And the resident will get the notification a month later and then wonder why it took so long when it actually didn't. But currently, we do have the online form where a resident can go in and request something to be checked out. Once we enter it in Cartograph, which takes a couple of days, they will automatically get an email saying that we received it. Thank you for the request and we'll get on it as soon as we can. So that is set up already. We just don't have the end one currently. And so we feel that everyone's ready for, for, for it to run smoothly.
I will say this, Alderman, I have been pushing for this, even for this presentation. They wanted to do the presentation about a month ago. I said, no, I want everybody to use it. So yes, all of our foremans are doing it. We just rode this out where the actual gentlemen and ladies who are in the trucks who actually do, they have a, they now have not only a pad where they can take a picture and then close it out on it. So we're moving forward. I, I expected this and my expectations is to have this live before, before snow season next year and then we'll be on. If there are no more questions, I'd like to move on. Any more questions? Again, Isabel, thank you very much. Great job in this presentation. We look forward not only to this one and other ones and Pup, and I'm going to put the pressure on right now. Building Department, you're next. Okay? Cartograph, Treasury Report is a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by, by Alderman Kirkwood to approve the Treasury Report. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Dr. Schwab, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item six, motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Mozio to approve zoning calendars, 2601, conditional use permit for the upper store resident at 1220 West Washington Street. Alderman Kirkwood, you got all your questions answered, sir?
Lost Alderman Kirkwood. We don't have him.
All right, we're going to go, motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Turner. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman, Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor. I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
And I believe we lost Alderman Bolton?
Who do you have? You got Alderman Bolton?
Yeah.
All right, I got Ald, we got Alderman Bolton and Alderman Kirkwood on the cell phones. Alderman, Alderman Kirkwood, this was the 26, the 1220 West Washington Street. Are you in favor?
Yes, aye.
All right, there's an aye for Alderman Kirkwood, an aye for Alderman Bolton.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Where's?
Mozio.
And Alderman Mozio, sorry, got a little crazy there.
Aye. Thank you, Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Alderman. Stay on the line. With that being said, there's no new business, no, no item eight, closing remarks. Alderman's time.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. Just want to go back to this payment to businesses to stay in our community. In the sixth ward, I have, we have seven business districts. Included in those seven districts are 13 restaurants, eight bars, 13 hairdressers and barbers or hair salon type businesses, with numerous other businesses. All of them, or the vast majority of them are out of business or right on the cusp. And they aren't getting the tax rebate, right? We're not, they're not getting any, anything back from the city. If we, we're giving away money and you talk about, well, if we don't give them money, they're going to take all of their money and go. Every, every business in my ward is, is already gone. You're all, all but done. And I, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. And essentially what we're being, what's been done here allegedly is that we're being held over the ba-, a barrel. We're being blackmailed and if we don't give some money back to this business, then they're going to leave. And that's wrong. There's something called equal protection under the law. And that applies to everybody, every individual and every business. We should not be picking winners and losers. One business is going to get a rebate, but nobody else, oh, wait, we'll give that one a B. We'll give that one an extension. We'll do this for that, but not for the other. It's wrong. So that's why I voted against it. All right, so in the sixth ward, we continue to do good work out there. But we're operating in an extremely reduced capacity in terms of our public works and police and fire. Everyone is constrained. Our code compliance department is constrained. I just encourage all of our residents, we see increasing bulk items left out on the parkways. And I reiterate, advanced disposal is not picking up the bulk items, the couches, the TVs, the chairs. I saw a toilet out in, in a parkway today. Nobody's going to pick those up. And what we're asking you to do is take them and store them back behind your house and your yard and your garage somewhere out of sight. And when this COVID-19 situation resolves itself and we return to business as usual, then those bulk items will be picked up. I know we've talked about having a, a huge citywide cleanup effort. But for, for the time being, just retain those items as best you can. And we'll get to you when, when this situation resolves itself. I think that's all I have for now. And thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I, I want to pay my sincere condolences to the family of Frank Harris. I knew Mr. Harris, he did play several roles, professional roles. I, I knew him when he was a corrections officer for the Lake County. But a wonderful man, very sweet soul. And again, my condolences to his family. I wanted to just reiterate what was said earlier that the governor has extended the stay at home until, May 30th, I believe is the date. Also want to, a, a big thank you for the, and continued support to the first responders, our police, hospital staff, all the staff associated with, with essential businesses that are staying open for us and, and to fulfill our needs. A, a big thank you to that. And also want to thank the citizens for their continued actions mitigate the spread of, of the virus. And we just continue the same and continue on the same course. Slow and steady. Thank you to everyone. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to join Alderman Rivera in offering my condolences to the family.
Thank you.
I'd like to join him in offering my condolences to former Alderman Frank Harris's family and friends and in the loss of his life. We also lost another longtime business owner in Waukegan this week, Mr. Kloss, who owned Kloss Tire and Auto in Waukegan for many years. Lost his balance to, lost his battle with lung cancer. So I, I send out my condolences to his family particularly, his wife, who's been my friend since we were five years old. We lived across the street from each other. So also I echo Alderman Rivera's graciousness towards our first responders and all of the citizens working in the essential businesses, the food stores and so on, to keep us healthy and fed during this unprecedented time. There's been a lot of residents that are concerned that we aren't reaching out enough as a council. And I, I want people to understand what a challenge that is. Even though we have, you know, so many ways to be connected with each other. Due to social distancing, we can't, you know, conduct a meeting. It's just a real challenge to, to get messages out to people. I encourage everyone to, you know, look at the city website, look at the Facebook page. We do hear you. We do understand that everyone's life has been affected by this current situation. I, I want to encourage us to continue making announcements in both English and Spanish whenever possible so that all of our residents can hear them and understand them. Possibly maybe putting some pamphlets out in the school lunch program. That's going out to a lot of people every day.
Yes.
And maybe something with the Water Bill, the letter, you know, a letter with the Water Bill. Those go out once a month. I realize things change so fast with this that by the time they get something, it may be old news. But hopefully we can work with our local paper or, you know, our local reporter at the Tribune, Ms. Coleman, to get information out. And, and any, any possible way we can to communicate with our, our residents. I'd also like to address, I know during audience time, Mr. Verdt was concerned about the masks. In addition to what the mayor talked about with the township giving out masks, I spoke with the coroner the other day and he's ordered 800 masks to go out to just for Waukegan. And also I encourage people to look online because there are ways to make a mask at home that's very easy with, with stuff you have around the house, rubber bands, hair ties, that type of thing. So I, I just encourage people to be as creative as they can with that and, and not necessarily feel they have to have a, you know, a 95 mask. That is, is really not for healthcare workers. So stay well, everybody, wash your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor.
Thank you. I also want to offer my condolences to the Harris family on the passing of, on the former Alderman Harris. You know, again, the amount that he gave to the community and we appreciate it. Tonight I did not vote for this tax rebate or whatever you want to call it. I, I feel like you can't turn around last week and vote for a $1.5 million deficit budget and then turn around and give tax breaks to everyone. The 1.5 deficit was that we were already 583, 83,000 that we weren't balanced. And then we did not vote on the food and beverage tax, which was $983,000. So it's just a balancing act. It's, I think we really need to revamp who is eligible for tax rebates or like again, whatever you want to call them. But I agree with Alderman Turner that we really need to assess that. We're losing a lot of Waukegan businesses that we need to keep in this community that have never been considered for that. And we seem to give them to larger companies that, again, it, the little guy always gets passed by. And our, our community is built on the mom and pop operations that have been here for years. So that's just something I feel like we need to look at. I want to say that in the ninth ward, we finally gotten on track with our yard waste. We had some problems with that, but I think everybody's on the same page now and everything is working. I do have some issues with people, the same as Alderman Turner talked about. I think it's fantastic and I've encouraged people to use this time to do home improvement projects. But we have some people cutting down massive amounts of trees and then I have tree branches on the curb, toilets, vanities. Advanced disposal doesn't normally take those kind of items anyway. They would take furniture. So, and again, even if advanced disposal was picking up, which they are not, you always need to call ahead anyway. But right now, just keep the stuff in, you know, in the back of your yard where people can't see it and we will do cleanouts. I know I was scheduled to do some in May. I think we're going to postpone those until June in light of, you know, the governor now postponing the stand, our stay-at-home order. But I promise you, the city is going to work at getting some of these things done. So just be patient with us, but don't continue to put things on the parkways. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bolton, is she on board? Is Alderman Bolton anywhere?
Let's keep going.
All right. Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager?
I too would wish, like to wish my condolences to Mr. Harris and the family and all the relatives. And remind everybody, just stay safe, wash your hands, practice what they tell us to do. And stay healthy and God bless y'all.
Thank you, Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio?
Yeah, I would see my condolences to Alderman Harris. He was my Alderman. I actually didn't, when I first got elected, it wasn't his seat because we went to nine wards. So it was a combination of his old seat and Alderman Rickards' old seat. So my condolences to him, also his family. Also my condolences to Catherine Watrow Francis's family, third ward resident. She was a trustee for the township. I know her husband well. He worked at the high school and my condolences to them. A couple of things. I've been trying to explain to people that the state is the point person on all of this COVID-19. We get, we're getting, we're getting our marching orders like anybody else in the state of Illinois from the state government and the Lake County Health Department is sort of the health department in our area that's in charge. The city doesn't have a health department. We don't have a staff for that. Obviously, we never have. So all of our directives and, and everything are coming from the state as far as a test, testing center or this or that. That's all going to have to come from the state of Illinois. There's nothing the city of Waukegan can do. We don't obviously have, Army Corps of Engineers, I think, is handling a lot of those.